This is the Commissioner meeting of March 27th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. At the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. And I have a roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Schick?
Here.
Director Space?
Here.
A moment of silence and a salute to the flag. Today, we're going to do a moment of silence for all those that perished on the branch in Baltimore. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, through the following: The New Jersey Herald and The Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board, maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. I'd also like to ask my fellow Commissioners to please put their phones away so that we are not distracted and looking at them, and I'll do it myself, too. Number five, approval of agenda. There were a few amendments to tonight's agenda. We will be adding to number 15, Resolutions, Item S, Resolution of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners to establish rules of conduct and decorum for public meetings. In addition, we have a second resolution under Item 8, amending the 2024 county budget as introduced, followed by a second public hearing for the amended budget. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still moved.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney makes a motion. Commissioner DeGroot, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Six, proclamation certificates and presentations. Deputy Director Carney is going to read the proclamation, 2024 Take Down Tobacco Day. Do we have anyone here that's accepting the? Okay.
Whereas tobacco is still the number one cause of preventable death in the United States and across the globe, and whereas the tobacco industry marks a wine rage of addictive and dangerous products that has resulted in the increase of youth e-cigarettes use, and whereas youth tobacco rates are at a 20-year high in the United States due to worsening youth e-cigarette epidemic, reversing the progress that has been made toward reducing tobacco use, and whereas Take Down Tobacco is a campaign for tobacco-free kids, signature platform for empowering people to stand up and speak out against the tobacco industry's tactics to deceive youth, and whereas the Take Down Tobacco National Day of Action is Day of Activism, where communities across the world rally together against the tobacco industry, reflecting on how far they have come and how far they still need to create the first tobacco-free generation. Now, therefore be resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim that April 1st, 2024, is the Take Down Tobacco National Day of Action, and together with the Center of Prevention and Canceling, Tobacco Free for a Healthy New Jersey, an incorrigible U.S., recognizes that tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, contain nicotine and other harmful substances that can cause lasting health effects, and be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners encourages all Sussex County residents to unite in raising awareness about tobacco use in their communities and encourages all youth to stay tobacco-free. By order of the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner, Director Jill Space, Deputy Director Chris Carney, and Commissioners Jack DeGroot, William Hayden, and Earl Schick. Would you like to say anything, Tonya?
Good evening. My name is Connie Bensmer, and I am the Sussex County Youth Coordinator for Incrutable Us. Incrutable Us is our youth tobacco action group. Every county in New Jersey does have a chapter. So in Sussex County, we are school-based, and we have four groups right now. We are at Kid Timmy High School, High Point High School, Vernon High School, and Sussex Town. Last year, we had 14 youth that were part of the group, and we have grown now to over 66 youth total. And we are still recruiting as well. The group, we not only focus on anti-vaping and anti-tobacco, but any topic that the youth are really passionate about, so kindness and health awareness. Again, we know that vaping is a big issue in a lot of these schools, so the group really comes together, and we share resources during the lunchtime, and we do different activities, and we really bring everyone together. So it is really a great time to be there with the youth. April 1st is our National Day of Action for Take Down Tobacco, and it is during spring break, so we did do our events last week and this week, and we focus on raising awareness about how tobacco companies really target the youth, you know, when it comes to e-cigarettes and base, you know, the flavoring of the products. So it does raise awareness, you know, about these products to youth, and it does give them a voice to, you know, speak out against tobacco. We do also have some people working in town as well. Just a little more information about Incrutable Us. We have an Instagram page, and again, we post a lot of pictures on there if you want to see what we're up to in the county. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah. And I'd like to give it to you, Tonya.
Okay, the next proclamation, April 2024, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, I don't think, is anyone here from Daisy? Okay. I'm going to read that one at their closed line event, which is later on this month, so we're not going to read that one tonight. Okay, number seven, authorizing the reading of the 2024 Sussex County Budget by the title only in accordance with the NJSA 40A:4-8. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden makes a motion, a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Number eight, the public hearing, 2024 Sussex County Budget as approved. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing for the 2024 Sussex County Budget as approved?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney, and a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Is anyone present to be heard regarding the 2024 Sussex County Budget as approved? Anyone? Yes.
Hello, Wendy Whipple, Andover Township. I was here at the last meeting where you introduced the budget. Could you refresh our minds of what the budget surplus was at the time?
Elka?
The fund balance. That's being used in the budget for that.
Well, the total. What is used in the budget, I could see, I believe, on the first page.
It's 17% of our fund balance policy, or $21,761,562.
And what is that used for? Just generally, what is?
Yeah, well, it's used for cash flow. It's used... You, it's a certain amount of budget that can be regenerated, and it's called the taxes.
Now, does that money include what came out of the sale of the homestead, the so-called ready-made home?
The sale of the homestead is in a separate account.
Separate account, okay. Because that's, that leads me to my Dennis Library question, and I don't know if now it's appropriate for him to ask it, or should I wait?
I think you should wait.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden makes the motion, and a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Resolution A, amending the 2024 county budget as introduced. I'm going to ask Elka to read that for us. Because she has to read it into record.
County of Sussex Resolution Regarding Amending the 2024 Budget, County Budget As Introduced. As the county budget for the 2024 budget, the year 2024 was approved on 28th day of February 2024, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said budget, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex of the following amendments to the new budget of 2024 be made. Number three, miscellaneous revenues, Section A, local revenues, increased unadjuvance and deposits, code 08-113, from $1,750,000 even, to $1,854,167. Total, Section A, local revenues, code 08-001, from $4,272,724, to $4,376,891. Section E, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of local government services, other special items, state of New Jersey salary reimbursement for county prosecutors, 08-247, from $104,167 to $0. Total, Section E, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of local government services, other special items, code 08-004, from $2,239,167 to $2,135,000. Summary of revenues, miscellaneous revenues, total, Section A, local revenues, 08-001, from $4,272,724, to $4,376,891. Total, Section E, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior consent of local government services, other special items, 08-004, $2,239,167, or $2,239,167 to $2,135,000. Total miscellaneous revenues, 13-099, from $12,601,057 to $12,601,057. And be it further resolved that pre-certified copies of this resolution be filed for exit in the Office of the Director of Local Government Services, for certification of the 2024 county budget as amended, and be it further resolved that certified copies of this resolution be forwarded to Ray Serenelli, County Auditorium of Zabachia, LLP, 200 Valley Roads, 300 Mount Orange, and 756, and is available and on basis certified as a true copy of the resolution adopted by the Board on the 27th day of March 2024.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution A?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney makes a motion, a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I'd like to have a discussion.
Okay. You were quick enough.
Sorry. Again, you know, I think this budget was passed, at least in my three years, the quickest that we ever had, and I think Ray Serenelli will attest to that. Didn't expect it to go as good as it did. 1,000% for Jill and I, who were here last year going over the budget, actually the year prior to rolling over to our budget of 23. So kudos to everybody who put their two cents into doing this budget for the 24-year, and our department heads, and so on and so forth. With the inflation the way it is, I think we got it down to a good number with the services that we still provide, so thank you all for that.
Healthy budget. Did you want to say anything, Ray? This is Ray Serenelli from Zabachia of the auditor.
So I'll echo a little bit about what Chris said. It was a good budget process this year. Things came together pretty nicely. So everybody that had a hand in it did a nice job, and it continues to do a good long-term plan that you have for the long term down here in Sussex County every time, you know, be financially sustainable over the long period. So it's a good budget, and it's a good budget to be there for the good reasons.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And just one, I guess, one more thing, because there was a question asked before. So that 17% of our budget, just to, for the audience's information, like, that's by statute, we have to have X amount of percentage in our fund balance. So we can't just take that 17 million and decide we're going to cut taxes and look like heroes. We have to have by statute a certain percentage. That's why we have a healthy budget as we do. That's all. Now I'm done.
Thank you. Now you're done? Can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Second public hearing, 2024, amending Sussex County Budget as amended. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing for amending the 2024 Sussex County Budget as approved?
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, and a second, Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, the floor is open. Anyone want to speak? Is anyone present to be heard regarding amending the 2024 Sussex County Budget as approved? Being none, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, and a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. B, resolution, final adoption of the 2024 Sussex County Budget as amended. Be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex that the budget herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation of $122,794,911.39 for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations, and authorization of the amount of $102,493,854 for the county purposes to be raised by taxation and certification to the County Board of Taxation of the following summary of general revenues and appropriations. Can I get a motion to finally adopt the 2024 County Budget as amended?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney makes the motion, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Resolution C, final adoption, Ordinance 24-01. At our regular meeting held on March 13th, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of March 19th, 2024, together with a notice of public hearing stating that it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Bond ordinance providing for various 2024 capital improvements by and in the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $3,075,000. Therefore, an authorizing $2,775,000 bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the costs thereof. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened?
Still moved.
Commissioner DeGroot, motion, a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, motion that this ordinance be finally adopted. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Can I get a roll call, please? A motion?
Still moved.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Final adoption of Ordinance 24-02. At our regular meeting held on March 13th, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of March 19th, 2024, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of 2024 capital improvements at and for certain facilities of the Sussex County Community College, located within the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, appropriating 2.8 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 2.8 million bonds or notes of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, for financing such appropriation, the principal of an interest on the aggregate principal amount of which will be entitled to state aid pursuant to Chapter 12 of the laws of New Jersey of 1971. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be open?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Is anyone, motion carries, is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Being none, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, next motion, and Commissioner DeGroot, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick makes motion, and a second. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Can I get a motion to approve it? Don't I need a motion? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, Commissioner DeGroot. And a roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. E, final adoption, Ordinance 24-03. At our regular meeting held on March 13th, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of March 19th, 2024, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Capital ordinance providing for the general capital improvements and the acquisition of certain capital equipment in and for the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, and appropriating the sum of $7,244,214, consisting of $6,250,786.78 from the county's capital improvement fund, and $993,427.22 from the county's reserve for departmental improvements to pay for the costs thereof. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot and Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed? Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, and a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, can I get a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center? Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner, Deputy Director Carney, and a second?
A second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? A roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Number nine, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. We will have the regular public session later on. This is for agenda topics only. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Floor is open for agenda topics only. Anyone? Can I get a agenda? There is one. Okay, sorry, I was quick.
Your record, it's already passed.
This is just way too long, but I'm reading it.
Kathy Brennan, Kenton Township. I wanted to thank you for supporting Resolution R, the New Jersey State Bill, A412, which allows Board to allow Commissioners who miss three consecutive meetings without an excused absence. I think that's a very important thing, especially with things that have been going on lately. People we elect, we elect them to do a job. They get paid to do a job, and I believe they should be here doing the job. And I totally support you being on board with that, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Agenda topics, okay. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Number 10, Commissioner comments. I will start my race with Commissioner Hayden.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing? Okay. Commissioner Schick?
So I had a terrific introduction to the Sussex County Vote Tech. Superintendent took Commissioner DeGroot and I around and showed us all of the different modules of the Vote Tech, and then outlined the collaboration that they are building with Sussex County Community College. They also mentioned that their enrollment is stellar, and that there is quite a number of people on a waiting list. So, you know, I was extremely impressed, especially around the diesel mechanic area, where the students are actually working on units that are in our buses, you know, and the teacher who certifies that the repairs are being done as per certification. So it's real-life stuff, it's not, it's real tools that they could take into the field and create a career with, and I was very, very impressed with that tour, so that's all I have for today.
Wonderful. You've been busy. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yeah. So to begin, the farmland preservation revitalization tour has continued since our last meeting. I went to Wannage Township's council meeting and Sanderson's Township Council meeting. Both councils provided positive feedback towards the initiative, specifically Sanderson was very enthusiastic and even offered up the goal of Sanderson preserving 1,000 acres where... where they're currently at eight-hundred-and-sixty-three acres preserved for farmland preservation. So, uh, really terrific, love the sport, and, uh, I will mention with, uh, the program too, we do have an applicant, um, the goal is four, so we're on a pretty good pace right now. Uh, I was blessed to, uh, have the privilege of touring the applicant's farm this past Monday. Uh, amazing farmland out there, uh, the property, uh, they're looking to preserve is a hundred-and-fifty-four acres, um, great fields for commodity crops. So, uh, looking forward to keeping you all up to date on that and, uh, the preservation piece, uh, with, you know, the outreach effort that I'm doing. Next, I want to say a big thank you to our very own Deputy County Administrator Lorraine Hens for joining me this past Friday for judging for each presentation. Uh, my kid is at any high school, so, uh, her and I really had a great time. Uh, we're already counting down the days to be judges for next year, so hopefully more of us can be, uh, present at it. But, uh, Dave Ford and Tanya really did a wonderful job organizing everything, and it was really a great program to introduce kids to public speaking, um, and letting them improve upon, you know, a vital skill that we all use every day. So, really great stuff. Uh, moving forward, there is an additional report from the Division of Health and Public, uh, Public Health and Nursing, but in the interest of time and everything going on, I had a really busy week, uh, running around for the county. Uh, I'm going to refer to the minutes where the updates will be provided from the department and be posted there. Next, this past week, uh, I did have the opportunity to meet Erin, the program supervisor for the ag program at Sussex County Community College, specifically, uh, ag business and horticulture. Uh, our discussion centered around two crucial aspects of the ag program she oversees, the potential advancement of the program, which I've been talking about, um, with the agricultural advance, uh, Community College Agricultural Advancement Act, and then also the other aspect, strategies for recruitment and retention for the program. And coincidentally, I made further progress on those two aspects, so I'd love to share that with you, uh, right now. So the first in regards to advancement of the program, uh, I had a visit to the one and only Hudson Farms. Uh, so, did that this past Friday, I had the opportunity to talk with two greenhouse workers to get and see a firsthand look at their magnificent greenhouse operation. Uh, it was extremely impressive as they have all different types of hydroponics in use and even have a separate building for aquaculture, which was, I mean, really terrific to see. Nonetheless, uh, the concept I have in mind, uh, with, you know, Hudson Farms is possibly an internship or even an apprenticeship program, uh, you know, with their greenhouse, which operates year-round and has temperature control. So, the year-round operation is really big because, as we know, community college academic schedule doesn't capture the prime harvest season, as you know, August to May, and June, July, August is really, you know, prime time for that. So, offering, you know, these students a comprehensive understanding of, you know, growing produce in a greenhouse during the fall when they're on campus and the spring when they're on campus, uh, could be really valuable and something that they put on their resume in addition to that. So, that was one aspect of the conversation. Now, the second part, uh, which is in regard to recruitment and retention of the ag program at the community college. Uh, myself and Commissioner Schick, as mentioned, had the opportunity to visit Sussex Tech. Uh, it was a very informative visit there, and I know myself and Commissioner Schick greatly appreciated the hospitality from, uh, the VOTE Tech team. Uh, a part of our visit, um, that, uh, a part of our visit included the tour of greenhouses that they have at Sussex Tech, as well as information for Tech's ag program. I'm happy to say that the administration, as well as the instructors, are all enthusiastic about working together to advance the ag efforts over at the tech school and allow it to streamline to the ag program at the community college. Uh, I do want to add and note that the greenhouses in use at Tech, um, at the tech school are a little bit outdated, so that's something, yeah, that way we might have to, um, address it down the road. Nonetheless, uh, they did have an aquaponic section of that, if you remember. Uh, very small, but still gives a great introduction for the tech students, um, about the possibility of, uh, exploring that. So, overall, I'm happy to continue this conversation with the college, um, in Hudson Farms and Tech, uh, and really, you know, get this, you know, program at SCCC, um, going for the ag. But continuing the conversation with Sussex County Community College, I know the community college has been in the news, and, uh, I am one out of two liaisons for the college, and as such, I made sure to be at the Board of Trustees' meeting yesterday at the college, um, to be up to date with the latest. So, some notable things I just wanted to present, you know, at tonight's meeting with you guys. Uh, in regards to reserves, uh, it was said that Sussex County Community College looks to be conservative and safe with their money, uh, and as such, they currently do have twelve to thirteen months' worth of expenses in reserves, which explains for, you know, a higher amount of them. Uh, in addition, the college is performing an organizational culture and climate study to, uh, to better understand workplace culture, areas of strengths and weaknesses of the community college, as well as the atmosphere and their overall feeling of being at SCCC. This will include three types of analysis, confidential surveys, uh, random interviews, and, uh, document review. And then, uh, I also just wanted to mention that there will be a separate senior leadership study, uh, which will include document review, random interviews, and confidential, uh, surveys throughout the college. Uh, last night, the Board of Trustees did a really nice job being transparent as they themselves did not present the information to everyone in attendance, but took it a step further and brought in the very sources of this information and had them present. So in regard to the reserves that I was mentioning, uh, the CFO and annual auditor came in and presented that information. In regard to the organizational culture and climate study, they brought in the person who is leading that study and, um, you know, in charge. Uh, finally, in regards to the college, uh, I'd like to just add that they did say enrollment looks to be up for the spring semester, uh, by thirteen percent, and upcoming su- summer enrollment looks to be up by five percent. And just to reiterate to everyone, uh, us as Sussex County Commissioners appoint members, uh, to the College Board of Trustees and approve the college budget budgets each year. Um, in my role as liaison and the other commissioner as liaison, uh, I actively seek out opportunities at the college that could contribute to the improvement of Sussex County. This includes the initiatives that I'm currently trying to do to enhance the agricultural program. And then, finally, I know I'm a little bit long, I know. But, uh, finally, uh, the Friday after our prior meeting, uh, NJAC had their quarterly board meeting, uh, of directors via Zoom. Uh, Commissioner Space were unattended as well, which was nice. Um, but the meeting consisted of updates regarding legislation that would affect counties such as the Overreform Bill, in addition to the hearing. Uh, in addition to that, we did hear from the acting, uh, New Jersey Department of Transportation Commissioner, Francis O'Connor. But within this meeting, I would like to, uh, you know, report, I did speak up during new business, uh, portion, addressing my fellow NJAC Board of Directors, uh, the lack of accountability for county commissioners in regards to their attendance. And as someone who is new to public office and being elected, uh, official, it is both an honor and a blessing to represent, you know, the wonderful people of Sussex County. Whether in Sussex County or throughout New Jersey, myself and fellow commissioners around the state come into office for all sorts of reasons, right? We got voted in for different reasons. Um, yet we share a common goal of serving our constituents and wanting to be in these seats. We ask to be here. Uh, we desire to occupy these seats and advocate for our communities, but it's crucial that this role is a privilege and not to take advantage of it. So, as such, in collaboration with LD twenty-four Assemblymen Mike and Gamort, uh, he is introducing Assembly Bill four-one-oh-two, which would allow the Board of County Commissioners to remove commissioners if the member misses three consecutive board meetings without excused absences. Uh, there is a resolution prepared on our agenda, Resolution R, which states, I'd like to read them to the record, uh, resolution in support of New Jersey Assembly Bill A four-one-oh-two, which allows boards of county commissioners to remove commissioners who miss three consecutive meetings without an excused absence. Whereas, the Board of Sussex County Commissioners is committed to maintaining effective governance of the County of Sussex and to fulfill their obligations to its residents, and whereas, the Board of County Commissioners acknowledged the importance of regular attendance at various meetings in order to fulfill the obligations to the community, and whereas, Assemblyman Mike and Gamort represents Sussex County in the New Jersey State Assembly, and whereas, Assembly and Gamort has sponsored Assembly Bill A four-one-oh-two, which proposes a reasonable measure to address absenteeism among New Jersey's county commissioners, and whereas, Bill A one-four-oh-two would provide Board of County Commissioners in the state of New Jersey the ability to remove a sitting county commissioner who has accumulated three consecutive unexcused absences via an affirmative vote of the majority of the board members present. And whereas, the Assembly Bill A four-one-oh-two was created using language found in NJS eighteen-A twelve-dash-three, which permits the removal of a member of a Board of Education who fails to attend three consecutive board meetings without good cause. And whereas, Bill A four-one-oh-two promotes accountability among the county commissioners and ensures the efficient functioning of local government. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners expresses the full support for Bill A four-one-oh-two, allowing for the removal of a county commissioner who accumulates three consecutive unexcused absences, and be it further resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners urges swift passage of Bill A four-one-oh-two and commits to advocating for the prompt consideration by prompting a copy, copy of this resolution to Senator Parker Space, Assemblywoman Dawn Fantasia, Assemblymen Michael and Gamort, the New Jersey Assembly, the New Jersey Senate, and all municipalities in Sussex County. Um, in addition, I know that our state senator, Parker Space, will introduce a similar bill in the Senate. Uh, I hope my fellow commissioners will support the resolution when it comes up because accountability is important at the end of the day. Uh, thank you, God bless, enjoy easily.
And thank you, I just want to comment on, um, that Assembly Bill A four-one-zero-two. Um, boards are created with odd numbers so that we never come up with a tie, and when we, when a board is at an even number, we could get into a dead heat and then the resolutions stall, so that's why we need odd numbers. So, I appreciate that bill.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney?
Thank you, um, just a quick question, Jack and I don't want to put you on the spot, you don't have the answer, that's fine, but you brought up the reserves for the college, the funds and the reserves for the college, do you know, are they online?
The reserves?
Yeah, and their funds, like what they're, what they have in their, in their fund account and, and so on and so forth?
I know they, the, uh, during the public session, they were asking to see it online, so I'm going to assume that it's currently not online.
Okay, okay, it should be.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just wonder if you could find that answer, that would be great, I'm just curious. It maybe would help, uh, resolve some problems that seem to be going on, um, in some people's minds. All right, so, I don't have much, actually. Uh, our ash tree removal program, removal of dead disease and distressed ash in other, uh, trees along county routes are right away. Elevation work will also be performed on, on, as a needed basis within the limits of segment work. Uh, our contractors, or we have two contractors, Midhurst Tree Care and Rich Tree Service. This was funded through ARPA. Seventeen segments of road will complete, will be, will be completed at this time. Eight-hundred-and-two trees have been removed along forty miles of road. That's what you guys are seeing out there, a lot of, a lot of, uh, free trees if you want to burn ash. Total program budget was four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Expended to date, two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, five-hundred dollars, and that's continually changing. Normal work hours are from seven to three-thirty, and work began on Monday, seven seventeen, twenty-twenty-three. Last year is estimated to continue for the next several months. St. Patrick's Day, it was a good day. Uh, we were attended, uh, myself, Commissioner Schick, Commissioner Space, and Commissioner DeGroot, attended the St. Patrick's Day parade. It was in the three years that I've attended it, it was, I think, the biggest attendance, um, that, that I've seen, anyway. So, it was a, it was a nice day, so that was nice, I suggest everybody go and go next year. Met with the BPU again, Commissioner Space and myself, um, with Christina Marks and our administrator, Ron Tappin. Uh, met with the BPU to kind of figure out, understand a little bit more. I know I reported on our last meeting, uh, what they're doing and, and how they're looking to bring some of this money back to Sussex County, and it is a challenge, hence, I think, why they call it a challenge report, right? So, it's very, very difficult. I, I do, in a way, feel like they're kind of using us to get information, um, because they don't want to do it, or maybe they don't have the means, and to, to a point, I actually, I asked if they had, uh, a grant to facilitate, um, somebody who works in, in this department, and they don't. So, you know, everybody here, you know, works as hard as they can doing what they do. So, with any further ado, we will be looking to the mayors, uh, to help out, to push this along. The timer strength is three months. Um, so, I know we're looking to do another mayor's luncheon, kind of go over this with them and get as much information from the public as possible, uh, to get it back to us and report back to BPU, and then that grant will hopefully come back here and we could update our, uh, our polls, our lines, and so on and so forth, and get a little bit of internet here in Sussex County. There's something I brought up probably six, seven months ago. We do have a Veterans Memorial over in, at the Green. Uh, it was approached probably about a year ago from a member of my American Legion, uh, Post and Branch Bill one-fifty-seven, that he was a member of a non-for-profit that actually helped start the Veterans, uh, Memorial over here. He came to me, he, he, he purchased a plaque. Um, so, I do have some numbers coming in for a headstone, so I'm hoping, hoping, hoping that by Memorial Day, we can do a, a re-grant opening at the Green with this new Pao Mieh plaque, Prisoner of War Missing in Action plaque. That would be the heads, headpiece of the Veterans Memorial. That's the only plaque that we are missing over there, all the other branches are over there, and that's one missing piece that I am working on and continue to work on. Um, that, that's all I have for today.
And I'm going to be brief on mine, because I've been doing a lot of reading tonight. Um, so, the four, well, four commissioners and I, so Deputy Director Carney, Commissioner Schick, and Commissioner DeGroot, we attended the grand opening of Insight Health, and I have a full report, um, that'll be online, so that you, that you can read. And what it is, is, um, the Board of County Commissioners, we had three-hundred-thousand dollars in ARPA funds that we were able to allocate, and they now have an Insight Health opened up on, uh, at thirty-three Newton Ave? Is that the address? Yeah, Newton Carter Road, um, in Andover, and it offers comprehensive psychiatric care for children and adults via telehealth or in-person appointments. These treatment options are redefining outpatient psychiatry for patients and serve to complement the existing options available within Sussex County. So, that'll be on my report here. We also have the Sussex County Veterans Appreciation Luncheon coming up, which is April twenty-fourth, um, at the Farmstead, you do need to pre-register, you can find the other information on the county website. Um, I have been working with our deputy administrator, Lorraine Hens, and Catholic Charities to see if we can bring in, and also working with Newton Hospital and their True North Program to see if we can bring, um, like a counseling service to our veterans because they need, you know, if they need therapy, somewhere where they can reach out amongst their peers and have maybe a monthly meeting and be able to talk things out without having to go to a psychiatrist. Um, I had, I was talking to, um, a vet last week, and he was telling me that when he talked to someone, they just wanted to medicate, and they don't all want medication. They want, they want to come amongst their peers and be able to share their stories, and they have, they have concerns on that. And also, uh, Commissioner DeGroot and I attended a, uh, tourism expo, and you were there longer than I was, but I want to congratulate Tammy Horsefield. I saw a lot of farmers there that I haven't seen at, um, chamber events, so that, that was really good. So, and that is all I have tonight. Okay, approval of consent agenda, we have no consent agenda tonight. Number twelve, approval of the minute, approval of the minutes. We have the regular meeting February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, and the regular meeting March thirteenth, twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meetings?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Number thirteen, ordinance, no additional ordinances tonight. Number fourteen, appointments and/or resignations. I'm not going to read them, I don't have to read them, do I?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to adopt appointments A to F?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Okay, next to the resolutions, Resolution A through?
S.
S. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through S?
She added that.
Make the motion.
Can we make a motion to amend that? I want to pull two of them out so that we, we have three separate votes.
Sure, you want three?
So, R and S pull out, because I, I don't know what S is, we, we haven't read that, I haven't seen it anywhere.
Okay. So, you want to pull out, you want R and S out?
Separate, yeah, so it'll be three different votes, okay?
Yep, sounds good, okay. So, can I get a, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through Q?
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney makes a motion, and Commissioner Hayden seconds. Uh, any discussion? Okay, can I get a roll call vote?
Uh, Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution R?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot makes a motion and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Uh, Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Commissioner Hayden?
No.
No.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Resolution S. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution S?
Still moved.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney, and a second. I'll second. Any discussion?
Well, what, what is exactly is the resolution?
You wouldn't read S into the record?
I'm sure you can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I'm happy to.
Oh, you've got it.
Resolution of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners to establish rules of conduct and decorum for public meetings. Whereas many Americans believe that our society is increasingly uncivil, and this problem is particularly acute and detrimental in the national, state, and local political arena as work threatens government's ability to function democratically and effectively. And whereas, across the nation, many counties, municipalities, and local governments have adopted policies and rules to promote civility and maintain decorum at public meetings. Whereas the County of Sussex maintains its commitment to the democratic process, individual rights of expression, robust debate intolerance of this, for disparate views. And whereas the County of Sussex convenes public meetings to address controversial issues that often engender passionate and conflicting opinions. And whereas an atmosphere of instability and disrespect at these meetings can stifle participation and debate, threaten the quality of decisions, and undermine the local democratic process. Whereas adopting rules of decorum applicable to all public meetings will ensure that civic engagement and local democracy continues to flourish in the County of Sussex. And whereas the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Division of Local Government Services, has promulgated regulations for the adoption by county and local governments of rules and procedures for the conduct of public meetings. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, state of New Jersey, as follows. One, definitions. The purpose of this resolution, the following terms, phrases, and words shall have the meaning as reflected herein. A, director, shall mean the member of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex presiding over the conduct of the public meeting. B, public meeting or meeting, shall mean any meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, subject to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash six et cetera. C, remote meeting, shall mean a public meeting that is conducted by any means of live telephonic, electronic, and/or other audio or video communication equipment. Two, general. Any person may address the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners at a public meeting on any subject of interest to the County of Sussex. Three, manner of addressing the Board of County Commissioners. A, no person shall be permitted to address the Board of County Commissioners without first being recognized by the Director. B, upon recognition by the Director, each person wishing to address the Board shall state in an audible tone for the record his or her name and address, subject, of course, Daniel's Law, the subject they wish to discuss, and if applicable, the person or persons they represent. Roman numeral one. To the extent practical, those physically present in the meeting chamber shall approach the podium or area designated when addressing the Board. C, all comments, questions, and remarks shall be addressed to the Board generally and shall not be addressed to any member of the public Board of County Commissioners individually or any county employee without permission to the Director, and if applicable, to the Commissioner to whom it is addressed. D, no person other than the Director, members of the Board, and the person having the floor shall be permitted into any, to enter into any discussion without permission of the Director. E, all public comments, questions, and remarks, whether made in person or otherwise in accordance with this policy, shall be limited to three minutes per person. No person shall be permitted to assign or give their time for public comment to any other person. F, after a motion is made to close public hearing on any matter or the public comment portion of the meeting, no member of the public shall be permitted to address the Board from the audience on any matter under consideration without first securing permission to do so, meaning maintaining, limiting disruptions. G, notwithstanding anything herein to the contrary, the Board may at any time temporarily waive, relax, or suspend any rule, procedure, requirement, or formality pursuant to this resolution by affirmative vote of the majority. For decorum, A, any member of the public making comments or acting in a manner that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of any meeting shall be called to order by the Chair. Disruptive comments and actions shall include, but is not limited to, sustained inappropriate statements and behavior such as, but not necessarily limited to, profanity, threats, defamationatory statements, yelling, shouting, whistling, booing, hissing, incessant clapping, foot stamping, stomping, intentional or repeated interruptions, and other action, statements, or conduct which disrupts, disturbs, obstructs, interferes with, or undermines the orderly conduct of the public meeting. B, if upon being called to order, such person continues to disrupt the meeting, the Chair may order the person to leave the meeting. If such person refuses to leave the meeting, the Chair may have that person removed. C, the events, sorry, you dropped your key card. C, in the event such person is participating in the meeting telephonically or remotely, the Chair may direct the clerk or appropriate staff to mute or continue muting the disruptive member of the public and warn that continued disruption or may result in their being prevented from speaking during the portions of the meeting open to the public comments or removed from the, from the remote meeting. Member of the public who continues to be disruptive after being called to order may be muted while other members of the public are allowed to proceed with their questions and comments if time permits. Disruptive individual will be allowed to speak after all their members of the public have been given the opportunity to make comment. Should the person remain disruptive, the individual may be muted or kept unmuted for the remainder of the public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Be it further resolved, a copy of this resolution shall be sent to the county administrator. As I indicated, this is done in conformance with the New Jersey DCA Local Government Services recommendations and drafted and brought to you, Director, for yours and the Board's consideration.
Thank you.
Director, just a quick question. Did everybody get to see this, this resolution? Because I know I saw it.
Yeah, I saw it.
I hadn't seen it, but now I've, I've heard it, so I'm good.
Jack, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution C?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick makes the motion. Did I say?
We already, S.
Resolution S.
And we, it's already, we've moved. So Commissioner Carney and, and you have moved them.
Okay, good. Okay. Roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Awards of Contract Change Orders Bids, Resolution A and B. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A to B?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Number seventeen, financial. Resolution to payment of bills of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to pay the bills list?
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Number eighteen, personnel. A, resolution regarding personnel agenda of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Still moved.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney, and a second. I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Number nineteen, administrative report.
Uh, thank you. I'll be very brief tonight for the consideration of everything else we got to do tonight. But yeah, Commissioner Carney's been working very close with our statewide insurance liability company to help us put together a training program for our equipment operators, our two B equipment operators. And we've been very successful in negotiating with Caterpillar that is going to perform a free training series for those people we can select and go down and get certified as trainers. The, the point of that would be to come back and be able to train our guys that want to be equipment operators. And in August, Caterpillar will be coming back to the county to put on the same type of training that we can provide to all the municipalities. That if any of the municipality employees want to take advantage of getting some on, hands-on training on equipment that they may or may not otherwise have the ability to do because of just pure timing and the ability to give, you know, leave your job and jump on a machine and take a person to go over and try to train you with it. So it gives us a very rare opportunity to put that together, both for the county operations and to be able to, to roll that out to our municipalities. Lastly, I know over a year ago, we talked about selling a piece of property in Stand Hook. The DOT wanted it for light of sign, light, sign, light, sightline adjustment. And we've been waiting, waiting, waiting. Elka was gracious enough to deposit the check this last week so that we finally got it after pounds of, of?
Sixty-five thousand?
Sixty-five grand. We spent every bit of that in paperwork, but that was, it was, it was, it was, I was just glad to get it. And just to close out, I would, to, to comment on this symposium that you guys went to with the chamber. I'm getting an overwhelming response from Tammy about the, the farmers that are continuing to call to get the, the additional education on the IT support and stuff of that nature. She has over a dozen farmers that have called her back to say, hey, we love what we saw. We'd like to continue on and to approve the processes of their economic developments on their, on their farms. So it was very overwhelming how people responded to that. That is all I got tonight.
Number twenty, county council report.
Yes, I'll be very brief. I only have one item for all of you. My only wish is that Assemblywoman Fantasia was here today because this has been near and dear to her heart since you were kind enough to bring me into the county. The county has requested, on a myriad of occasions, documents via open requests from the New Jersey Department of Health relevant to that set due Andover Subacute. And we have been thwarted in our efforts from the very beginning. The DOH has refused nearly every request that we have filed and provided sparse documents. And those that they've provided have really haven't said much. We have, we had filed lawsuits to try to compel the DOH to provide those records. The date's been moved multiple times. The handful of documents that they provided, in our opinion, have been largely non-responsive. The judge, we had a conference just recently, and the judge has indicated that he has reviewed the documents that the DOH is withholding and finds that the overwhelming majority of those documents withheld by the DOH are being improperly withheld. That said, it's only a conference. The state has until May eighth to decide if they're going to turn them over or force us to a hearing. But it was a good welcomed response from the judge that we've been barking up the right tree, not the wrong tree. And if they turn them over, it's over. If not, we'll, we'll probably have a hearing sometime over the summer. But I feel a little bit better about where they are and, and I'm grateful to the commission board, current and, and prior, for their persistence in not taking no for, for an answer from the state and the Department of Health. So that's it.
Sounds good. Number twenty-one, unfinished business. Unfinished business? I'll ask county council the same question. Anyone contact us about a federal investigation of our food pantry?
No, ma'am.
Has the AG, the office contacted anyone on a no-show job?
No, ma'am.
Can I, can I just say something?
Yes.
So when they talked to me last, which was, they said they wouldn't even tell me the
Which one is they?
The feds.
Okay.
They're not going to tell us anything until we get a target letter. Once we get a target letter, it means we, and the council should know that as well. That means we're pretty much under, we're going to be indicted.
Okay.
Somebody's going to be indicted. So they're not going to tell us what they're doing, if anything. They won't even tell me, and they talk to me.
Are you looking to tell the donor we don't want their food?
No, I don't want that. I just want us to follow IRS protocol. I mean, everybody else in this room has to. Why wouldn't we do it? Why wouldn't we do that?
I just, it's, it's so hard not to comment. I've never seen anyone wanting to attack a food pantry.
I don't want to attack the food pantry, but there's something obviously wrong not a compliance.
Okay, I'm going to move on. Number twenty-two, new business? Any new business? Okay. Number twenty-three, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, and a second.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. The floor is open.
Good evening. My name is Helen Peckman. I live in Newton. I'm here for two reasons tonight. But the first reason, it's run up in here so many times, for I would like to know the status of the renovations to the Dennis Library. Moving ahead.
I don't think anything's changed in the last two weeks. Am I correct? No.
Yes, it's, yeah, we don't have any report for yet. I know you don't want to hear that. You want, there's, there. You know, I, I think, well, I'll.
Applications with the state. We've had some emails back and forth trying to answer some questions that they've had. Nothing substantive at this point. I think we're going back and forth on just numbers right now. And as soon as I have something a little bit more definitive or the questions from the, the library have been, state, on the state library director have been answered, or were asked to provide something different, I will. But at the moment, I don't have anything new, other than everything that we've, we've had that we've been able to turn over has been filed.
When we get answers, we'll give them to you.
Thank you. We will keep coming and we'll worry more people to keep asking you questions.
No problem.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, part two. I, I will not recount the incident that I participated in a week ago with a, an elderly woman, say, elderly, she's young enough. But anyway, she was having difficulty getting around. She was waiting for the shuttle. And outside Home Goods, holding a little Marshall bag. And we were there forty-five minutes. I went over, got my car, got my folding chair for watching the kids, my great kids' sporting events. And I put it in front of Marshall's so that she could sit down and wait for this show. She used my phone. We called the shuttle guy. We said, I'll be right there. Twenty-five minutes later, the shuttle came, which made me think just, so.
One minute.
Okay. I want to know, I have a report that kind gentleman here prepared. I haven't really looked into it as yet, but how many shuttles we have, how many we're responsible for, who's in charge of that, and can we get more shuttles?
I can get that information for you by the next meeting. There, we do have, like, a pamphlet that has all the times and the routes, which I have, but I don't have it here with me. And you can follow and see where the pickup times are, you know, how many different routes we have. We also have an on-demand service for people that need to go to, like, dialysis, and it's, and, and the stops are not on, on our routes. Yep. But I can bring that pamphlet and get it to you for the next meeting. We do have it.
I just want to know, who's in charge of those people?
That would be Nick Kaptenakis, but, you know, from Sussex County Transit. So, yeah, so Sussex County Transit, you can look it up, like, I don't know if you have it online, or we can, I don't think it was in my report today, anything on that. No.
No, when you, the next meeting, we talk about the library.
Yes. Yeah. Or if you, if you want to shoot me an email, then I can get you the information that way. Sound good?
I have Miss Helen Peckman's email address.
Oh, you do? Okay, good.
So we can get you that information.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenton Collins, Andover, New Jersey. Mr. Hayden, glad you could make it. We missed you.
Love your shirt.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. DeGroot for his work with the Sussex County Community College AG program. Erin's my ex-wife, and it's wonderful to see her program. As you know, Erin, your help is greatly appreciated, you know, tremendously by her, very helpful. So I'm going to share that. Thank you for your support of A four one oh two, or the Bill Hayden Bill. I hope that gets passed and put into use quickly. Here this, this evening to ask Mr. Hayden to tender his resignation without further delay. Mr. Hayden has disgraced this county and all true veterans who have served this nation with honor and integrity. You all may have noticed that you haven't seen me at your meeting since Mrs. Space joined the board. I attended one meeting two years ago to ask for your help getting a rotting bridge near a church in Andover replaced, a request which was ignored. And the next time, when Mr. Hayden joined the board, wearing his shirt, and I sat right in front of him. That was the last time I've been here until two weeks ago. Once Mr. Hayden joined the board, I stayed home and I waited for him to fall from grace, and it did not take long, did it? I have to remind you that you and your friends up on the Sussex County Republican Party put Mr. Hayden there. You wouldn't be sitting in that chair if you didn't put him there. And you need to stop putting people like that in those chairs. Thank you.
Hi there. Hail Jess Cornelius. I live in Leighton, New Jersey. I'm here again to bring up stolen valor. I have chosen not to use that person's name that I want to talk about. So since I don't want to identify whether he's a male or a female, I'll say he-she. So the he-she's of the people are the people who pretend they are veterans and are not. The he-she's are the ones that have no courage.
and are not. The he-she's are the ones that have no courage, unlike the warriors who actually go into battle and continue to fight for our country. The he-she's are people who probably are unhappy with their position in life and make stories of, of movies that they've seen, et cetera, of how exciting the military life is because they have a very dull life. Now, on the contrary, my son, age 44, with four children, has been in the New Jersey National Guard for about 22 years. He and 1,500 other New Jersey National Guard people, male, female, 25 being New Jersey State Troopers, have been deployed to Syria. Now, that is a veteran. He has four kids, one just was born. That's a veteran who leaves his family, who devotes his life to a cause, not someone who is a wannabe, who has no courage, who is a disgrace to all the other veterans in the area. How many minutes do I have left?
Keep going.
Okay. So, I received in the mail a notice of tort that I'm about to be sued with the rest of you guys who are up there. So, I have decided that he-she probably is the best way to describe the person because I don't want to say if they're--
One minute.
So, anyway, so I will end this early and say that I appreciate coming here. I appreciate if you guys take action about the people who are pretenders, if you are able. And I also think that we all should be more kind to our veterans because they really do have a stressful life, and sometimes we don't appreciate that. And I do think that we should honor the veterans like you did at that last meeting that we had. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe LaBeberra, Stillwater. Five-time combat veteran, 21 years retired. I'm here because Bill Hayden is a fraud. He's lied, not just to me, but to the people of this county. I'm doing this, we're going to do, in my capacity as Chair of the Republican Party, a recall. This recall will be exhausted. It will waste a lot of time and effort, but it'll be worth it, like all the time and money and effort you have wasted by everybody you have burned and betrayed. J.D. Southall, passed. J.D. Southall, I was there when he was wounded, unlike you, Mr. I killed Pablo Escobar and all that crap that I've gotten emails all over the country, people from who said things about you. J.D. Southall, I was there when he died, when he was wounded. He passed recently, I just found out. In his name, we're going to do a recall on this impostor. Then, saying he's our friend, saying he's a Republican, saying he's with us, he calls up a Democrat leader who actually tapes him where he slanders us horribly, horribly, saying horrible criminal things about us. This is a dishonorable fraud. Republic's fall because of this. Republic's fall because institutions have no credibility. This man has no credibility, and he sociopathically just sits here, and your Confederates are low, and your Confederates are despicable. Now, these people will continue to waste time and effort and taxpayers' money. Oh, big tough guy. How many times did you tell me you kill people and throw them in the woods? How many times did you tell me what a brave man you were?
Mr. LaBeberra looks--
And you resort to threats of lawsuits, and you're a public figure, Mr. LaBeberra, free speech constitutionalist, but I'm going to sue you, and I'm going to sit anonymous bloggers after you, and I'm going to do all these lies and slanders, and the slanders aren't documented, and you're going to--
One minute.
And these slanders are done by someone who is ultimately a liar. There's no credibility to anything he does in the name of J.D. Southall. We're going to do a recall. I don't care till my dying day, till my dying day, we're going to fix this mess that we brought into this county, show that the Republican Party is the party of Lincoln, we stand for people.
Good evening. My name is Wayne McCabe. I'm president of the County Historical Society. Last time I split in this well, it was your pre-orders.
We weren't here when you came in here last night.
I was historic.
I've been here a long, isn't it? I didn't see you.
Wayne, that was historic.
Sorry to take your time. Start again.
I'm glad you're standing in front of the county board of commissioners this year. I don't want to take a moment to, if I have your, I'm in space, if I have the right to speak to a free official. I understand, Mr. DeGroot, that you're the commissioner of the County Historical Society?
Yes.
This way you can get a board?
Sure.
And I make this offer not just to you, sir, but also to the other members of the board and your staff.
If you could go for the microphones, or just because it's the only thing that picks it up for the record, otherwise they won't, it'll just be a void in the, in the audio.
There's always with a beer. We have any number of new exhibits up. We are reaching out into the public, more so than we have in the past. Some 18 years ago, the pre-order board appointed me the county historian, the first one, and with one charge, go out and educate the public about our history. And that's what we're doing. We have been doing it, and continue it. And now we're taking a wider approach, where we're trying to get into schools, local legislators, we're trying to get other organizations involved with us, that we will close talks with like this. We'll have a much broader approach to how we want to educate the public about these reports like this. So, I carry the keys to all the buildings in our building complex. We have three buildings now, plus this large cemetery. If any of you, if you're convenient, want to go in and see what we have to offer, I have the keys, and I'll be able to take you in on my time. We're normally open for four hours, nine to one on Fridays, but we're looking also at opening time, probably 10 on Saturdays. I don't know if we get where we were in 1938 when we opened at five days a week, but we're trying. So, there are a few hospitality, and everything we have to offer to the public. I'd like to show you what we have, and if you come by. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dimitri DeHawkes, Stillwater Township, and I wanted to thank you all for allowing me to speak today. I've been here before about this matter, and I just wanted to get an update, and I want to provide more information to the commissioners because I truly believe that the county engineer, they reacted very quickly when they decided to install two traffic lights in Stillwater Township. The first two traffic lights installed in Stillwater Township, the two traffic lights that are literally sitting in the top of the compound in my town. And this, this matter has become very unattainable for my family. It's very terrible for the community. The gentleman that just spoke is the head of the Sussex County Historical Society, and I've heard discussions about the Dennis Library. This is the home, the former home of Alfred Dennis, the same person that put the, the library in place. This is the former home of Peter Wintermute, who fought in Sussex County militia, fought for the freedom of our country. And the way we're being treated at this time is just terrible. We were told that we would have engineers appointed, whatever, for January. It's now the end of March, rendering into the second quarter of this year, and we have no progress. We still have two operating generators, operating at 64 decibels, the limit is 65, in front of our home. We have now a makeshift electronic pole, whatever you want to call it, that's supposed to add electricity to these temporary lights. And it's all based on myth, based on information that's not factual. The engineer claims that there were three accidents in front of this property at the Spring House, and there's no concrete information that that even happened. Even if it did happen--
One minute.
There were 16 accidents since 2006. Out of 16 accidents, 12 of which had to do with deer. Not one deer caused a traffic light to be put in our town, not one. Those accidents caused injuries. The injuries that were caused to folks that were driving improperly or that were distracted or drunk, allegedly, had nothing to do with the spring pond. The spring pond didn't jump in front of the road, okay? The deer did. And I'm punished daily having to deal with this problem. It sounds like New York City outside my house, in Bobcat Alley. That's not fair. We've got to step it up. I mean, I know it's insignificant. I know it's a first-world problem. I know you guys are dealing with a lot of serious stuff. But we are dealing with a really serious problem every single day. People throwing garbage, people putting signs up now. Now it's election season. I bet you all see some, some signs from some of, some of the local commissioners if they're running this election.
Time.
I mean, this is, you know, this is, this is just terrible.
We'll reach out, thank you. We'll reach back out to Bill Copanol.
If I may--
Yes.
Dimitri, I told you I would get back to you, and I will get back to you. I know it's been longer than I expected myself, too, and I've been busy with a lot of stuff, and that's no excuse, but I will look, I will find out from Bill myself tomorrow. I have your number. I will get, I'll get you an answer one way or another. Again, I'm not going to promise you that's going to happen next week. Could be five months. Maybe they're busy. Maybe they're backlogged, but at least I'll get you an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leah Dunker, 985 Greenville Road, 1 New Jersey. As I'm sure most of you are aware, I'm here because I live on Greenville Road, which is currently a 50 mile per hour road with literally no shoulders. I'm the 12-year-old with the bus stop. I'm the 12-year-old that spoke at many board meetings in regards to restoring the discontinued bus stop on the neighborhood. Multiple bus stops used to exist on Greenville Road past Mount Salem, where the students lived at the end of Greenville Road. And the only reason why it was discontinued is because the students aged out of the school district, and there was no longer a need for the bus to come down. In the beginning, the school district noted that money was not an issue, but it's not being done. Superintendent said that they're in full support, and some board members said they would like to see this fixed. I learned that it is easy to say that money isn't an issue for them, and that they're in full support when they have fingers to point at others. I guess they also might have expected or hoped for me to give up before they ran out of those funds. It's been a very long time, and many fingers have been pointed at people, but the people to point at started to join them. When it was pointed out that the district already has a bus on another route that crosses the state line in Unionville, New York, to a situation very close to mine. It was pointed out that every person that lives on Greenville Road gets picked up at their residence, some even neighbors do, each with their own bus stop. And everyone gets picked up at their residence on Greenville Road, actually lives closer to the Mount Salem bus stop than we do, yet none of them have to use it. And again, windowed more went away with them, not by the district, but by my mother, that would have turned the bus around, that was not a dirt road, did not require the bus to back up, nor required no order of any stops to get changed. Then the sale of the bus company finally sold, and a new company that had the correct DOT clearance, and according to a board member that flips down Facebook, the new bus company agreed to do it at the start of 2023's quarter. They just needed the school board to give the order. There were no more fingers to point at anyone, and all they had to do was be in full support as they claimed to be. But I still don't have restored bus stops. And the excuses I was left with was left--
One minute.
Was the importance of less than eight minutes of sleep for five families that all signed petition. And the board is meeting state minimum. Minimal, minimal is something not to be stravagable when it comes to the safety of children. States not pretend to know what is best or what every road is like. They leave that to the school boards so they can take in the nature of these roads in account, where roads just like that. Finally, since they are meeting state minimum, and this is a county road, it is a county issue. It is a county issue to make sure the road is safe, not dangerous. I'm only 12-year-old, but even I realize it is more perspective to send a bus. But I guess the board would rather just put finger down and look to solve the problem. Where I would like to say the story ended there, it did not. There, I now have new families that are closer to the board than I am. There are now four times the amount of families, and almost double the amount of children when I started to advocate for my family. Most of my thought that this would have given the board a reason to reassess to me if a bus stop came down from the state, but it has not. At first, we were all put at the Mount Salem and Greenville Road bus stop. But very recently, my school board, instead of improving things by sending the bus down like they did for decades, their decision or their solution was almost double up the distance for these three other families, making a bad situation even worse. They did this, I believe, because they knew I would speak up for myself, and that people might actually stand up for me. These three other families cannot speak up for themselves. They don't want anyone to stand up for them, because they don't speak any English. The board has only moved the non-English speaking families. Again, the school district did not expect me to do exactly what my parents, teachers, and local law enforcement have told me to do. I don't give up, and if you see something, say something. I realize that they may retaliate against me by removing me. Please help the residents on this county road. My parents take pride to raise us and live in a county that still values hard work. Never did they expect to be a part of a district that points fingers at others. I ask you to please talk to them, I ask you to please talk to them to resolve this. Support me in any way you can. If they will not have the bus come back down Greenville Road, I ask you to please fix this road so students can have access to their education. Everyone knows students should not be on this road. It currently meets almost all the points in the Bible that makes a road hazardous. I ask you to please put for a change in better legislation for areas with slow roadways like Greenville Road. There is a legislation that protects the kind of roadways that are non-remote or walkers use. There seems to be none to protect remote students from the same hazardous roads. Access to our education should also be considered. Please. If this road cannot be fixed, please think about passing a resolution that you're in support that people under the age of 18 should not be walking on this road to access to education. Thank you.
Thanks. I just want to commend you for your efforts. You've been at this for quite some time now. I followed through the advertiser, and I have listened to the school board meetings. There's not much that our, our board can do, but we are familiar with your area, and like you said, we could talk to the school board members. You know, every little bit helps, and I hope that you get a resolution soon. I had, when my kids were younger, they had a bus stop. I live on a county road also, and the bus stop was a mile away at 6:00 a.m. So, I do sympathize with you because I wasn't going to let my sixth grader walk, you know, a mile at 6:00 a.m.
And there's, but there's nowhere for it to turn around.
It would be in New York State. That's what the problem is.
Yeah, I know, but I wonder if there's any way we can find some county property or do something.
Yeah, I think it's--
I mean, they've been doing this a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Is another one in Unionville, New York, or New Jersey, another bus that does it?
And they turn around in Unionville on 284. Okay. Okay, well, we'll see if we can, maybe our voices can be heard, and, you know, that's the best we can do for you, but I commend you. Keep up the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm Leah's mom. She's much better than--
Can you just state your name, please?
You said Leah's mom.
I'm Leah's mom. She's a better mom than I am. Currently, we have proposed for the school district another way in terms of the bus around. It would require it to go into New York, that is true. Our school district already has buses that are driving through New York on 284 on that part of the state line, so this wouldn't be something new for our district. The new proposed way would keep the bus going in the perfect flow of traffic that are perfectly deep and sound. It would be Greenville turn. It would be Greenville Road, which turns into Mountain Road when you hit New York. Then it would go Greenville Turnpike to menacing Turnpike. It's almost like a perfect triangle right in front of the D E W and that one church. And then they would then exit and get back onto Greenville. It would be in about an extra eight minutes to, from the bus stop, not from our house, but from where we're actually getting picked up back to the other bus stop. And like Leah said, currently, every person that is picked up residentially on Greenville Road will live closer to the Mount Salem bus stop, like on our house. And if sleep time really did matter, then they would be using the bus stop, too.
Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Woolstein, Montague Township. I'm going to try to be quick here. I've been here for multiple reasons. I want to clarify my job at Morris, excuse me, previous Morris. Non-Alle Township School District was obtained and based on my resume because I worked with my current boss in Sparta for two years. She recruited me over the summer as I had assumed a position at a summer camp regarding doing transportation supervisor at that summer camp. I also completed the Rutgers Certification Education Program as a transportation supervisor. It was recently publicized. The Spaces had gotten me my job. While the Space family has done many great things for Sussex County, they did not get me my job. I will not thank the Spaces for my job, because I got my job on my own merit and because I had worked with my previous supervisor currently now. Let that be the record, please. Sussex One Township Committee heard from Leah and I last, at Commissioner meeting, at their board meeting, Commissioner DeGroot was there. at their board meeting, Commissioner Degroot was there, um, in attendance. So he heard a lot of what we had. They had a question and answer session with us, which I'm told is unprecedented with that particular township committee. Uh, we disclosed many of the information and facts regarding the bus stop. Um, they will be sending a letter of support to the Sussex One Board of Education for Leah. I am going to ask that each commissioner here get together and draft a letter of support for Leah. The solution Sussex One, um, School District has offered at different times of many is to put a sidewalk in at the base of High Point Mountain along five nineteen. And that would be a county project. That is what they are asking for. Because the state does not make, it is not mandatory for a school district to worry about the traverse from home to bus stop. Your situation is the same. The traverse from the home to bus stop can be by bicycle. It can be by car. It can be by, by your two feet. It could be by.
One minute.
Um, I also want to just put into, um, motion here that please do a letter for them. Um, it's a previously established bus stop that just needs to be reinstated. They have over almost nine hundred thousand dollars in their transportation budget. Just saw the numbers released. I want to say also that I support Mr. Hayden resigning and the call for him to resign. I support recalling the poser as well. I also support forty-one oh-two, and I find it extremely disgraceful that you won't even want to hold yourself accountable for coming to these board meetings and you receive tax payers money for every day and every dollar that, that you do up here. So it's, it's just, it is really disgraceful at this point. You lied to myself. You lied to me about your stories. You made me think that you could identify with my daughter who currently serves in the United States Marine Corps. And you are a liar and you need to resign.
Commissioner Space, just real quick on that topic, because the three people spoke about the, the bus route.
Yeah.
Um, I, if somebody can get us some information, because I don't want to take anybody else's time.
Yeah.
Meaning how many people are now to reinstitute the bus stop? So it was just Leah at one time. Now there's more people from what I'm understanding, seven people. So what does it take to reinstitute? So if you can get that information to Leah or your mom, Leah's mom, uh, can get that information to Christina Marks, that way we could understand it a little bit more. Maybe you guys understand it better than I did. I, I just don't know. But I, I'm curious just to see that. And I don't have a problem writing a letter of support either. Um, I lived off of Mount Salem Road. So I used to take Greenville a lot. I lived there for two years. Um, so I, I understand that road. But I just want to understand that process more too. If you can get that to us, that'd be great. Thank you.
Kathy Brendan, Hamza Township. Um, I just basically wanted to address what you would call, I guess, the elephant in the room, the accusations of stolen valor and that nothing has been said that this is not true. This is true. There has been no apologies, no offers to resign. And also, I feel that this is a detriment to the whole county, basically. I feel it's a disgrace. Somebody who calls themselves a patriot, and if they are lying about their military service, they are certainly not a patriot. They are much worse than that. And I just feel that maybe in the future, in, um, you know, coming up with people who you want to support to be commissioners, maybe you should use a little more caution and a little better judgment. Because I think this is really a very sad thing for, for you guys and for the county. And this stuff about everybody being sued or whatever, it's just a subterfuge. To change the subject for what the subject is. Did you serve in the military? Did you not serve in the military? That is the question which has not been answered in, in a good way. Either you served in the military and you have proof of that, you did not serve and you owe everyone an apology, and probably a resignation. Thank you. Oh, I just wanted to say really quick. I was at the, um, college trustee meeting last night. And I was very concerned to hear, I mean, everybody knows that there's issues going on at the college. And I was very concerned to hear that the president of the college had a gun in his office. And I, I find that very, very concerning. There are things going on, you know, there are discrepancies about what's going on. And I just think a firearm mixed in with that is a really bad thing.
Okay. I'll just address that, that there are, and they, the Board of Trustees oversees the college and they are doing inquiries into everything.
My, my only concern about their, uh, survey is, the survey goes to the trustees. And my impression from the survey, from the meeting last night is that the trustees are not really interested in hearing this. They basically said, it's hearsay. It wasn't done, uh, the accusations weren't done properly. And I just feel it's going to go by the wayside. And if nothing else, I feel that maybe the president should temporarily be put on leave or something. So he's not carrying around a gun on campus while there's tensions going on.
Yeah, I don't think it'll go by the wayside. I, I do believe that there's an inquiry into all the different allegations. So, uh, Deputy Director Parni and I met with someone and then he assured us.
I attend the college sometimes. I'm a part-time senior student. And it makes me very nervous to know that there's tension going on. And in president's office, he's, he's.
Time.
Having a gun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Ravios, Friday, New Jersey. I am about to speak about a very similar topic. Yesterday, at the Sussex County Community College Board of Trustees meeting, I spoke in regards to the deplorable behavior of Dr. Connolly, its president. And so far, I'm disheartened at the lack of action from that board. I've come to implore this board to take any action within its power to ensure that the integrity of the institution won't fall any farther. For the sake of simplicity and time, I will simply read down a list of his transgressions. And while I will admit that some of these are not confirmed by official review, the sources of these accusations are very credible. Explicit sexual harassment, threatening and blackmail of staff, including and not limited to professors, facilities, custodial staff, and other faculty. Lack of transparency with money management. The statements made about the college budget, about which programs are being cut and which professors are being fired do not coincide with the financial statement that was presented by the financial representative and auditor at the board meeting yesterday. Enlisting staff to, uh, what boils down to do essentially his dirty work, my formal, my former faculty advisor personally threatened a member of staff against speaking out at the board meeting in February by threatening the enrollment status of her son at the behest of the president. Cutting programs and unreasonably firing staff to the point that several of them have completely cut ties with the university and stopped employment elsewhere. And to bring it up again, the fact that there was at least at minimum an accusation of a gun present in his office. And there was a recording, uh, at the board meeting yesterday, which confirmed by the president's own vocal admission that there was a gun in the office. My personal feelings on his reprehensible actions aside, these are deplorable, objectively morally bankrupt, and at time illegal accusations. There have been four separate letters of complaint from whistleblowers to the Sussex County Community College Board of Trustees. It hurts the school.
One minute.
Thank you. There is a decline in registration for the coming semester. Perspective staff are withdrawing their applications. I'm a member of the Student Government Association and the Student Ambassadors, and I invite you to take any possible action to remove him from the county's university. Thank you for your time.
Alan Henderson, LaFayette Township. I just want to comment going back to the food pantry. I know that seems to be a hot topic here now for several months. Don't know whether you all had the opportunity of not to go to the food pantry, but I took it upon myself last Thursday to volunteer at the food pantry at seven AM in the morning. I can tell you, I've looked here my entire life in Sussex County. I was astonished how many bags there are going out to children for lunch program. It is incredible. I would have never, ever thought in a hundred years that that many kids or people were in need of food here in our own town. I guess we're fortunate. Maybe we don't see that. I will urge anybody in this room, if you have nothing to do on a Thursday morning, please go there and see the food there that's going out to our own residents suffering with nothing to eat. It's astonishing. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a wonderful process that they do. They have it down to a science. The amount of people that they feed, it's incredible. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm Leah Mary and Charles from LaFayette. Um, if you recall, I spoke at last month's Bishop's meeting and attested to some very disturbing and horrific behaviors exhibited by the SECCC president. And as you can tell, I'm nervous again. I apologize. Sadly, I'm here again. As it appears, a multitude of concerns expressed and endless presented by numerous students and staff at the past two Board of Trustees meetings seems to have fallen on deaf ears. I have recently learned too, that our president has brought firearms onto campus. It is my understanding that this is illegal. I now feel much more unsafe than I did before. It appears Dr. Connolly is also a pathological liar and has been caught time after time. Um, Dr. Connolly just recently removed our COO, James Gaddy, and put him on an indeterminate leave due to the fact that James spoke the truth regarding the corruption and abuse. With all of this evidence presented by multiple students and staff over the last months, what will it take for the board to do their job to remove Dr. Connolly? Dr. Connolly has lost his credibility and his effectiveness as a leader. Effectiveness as a leader is now nonexistent. I am aware of the reasons behind the Board of Trustees. I am unaware of the reasons behind the Board of Trustees' lack of action. It is very suspicious at the least. I am probably one of the few persons here in this room and the county that have actually been in their shoes. I can say with great conviction, they need to do their job.
One minute. One minute.
One minute. Thank you. Um, and I know there is an investigation being launched. And the only thing I'll say is this phrase should make sense, the fox guarding the henhouse. We have had multiple investigations and the results go back to the top and it's ignored. Um.
Thank you.
And thank you for your kindness last time that I spoke. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
I am James Gaddy. I am the aforementioned COO of Sussex Community College. Technically, I still have that job, but I am also, um, after speaking up here at the commissioners meeting. Uh, I, I just want to say a few things I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I just enjoyed watching the fun work you did. Um, I, I was the one who reported that Dr. Connolly had a gun in his office because he told me about that. I worried about the man's mental health because I was worried he was going to kill himself in his office. And so I brought it up to Dr. Karen, and I applaud her and Kirk Goody for conducting up the good enough search. But I want to state for the record, after Dr. Connolly came back on Monday, he started telling everybody that I fabricated the entire story about him having a gun. And so there's. And you can listen to the recording, but Dr. Connolly, I don't have a shot of these things on. But Dr. Connolly admits that, that he did have a gun in his office. And, and that troubled me. And the reason is to trouble all of you, even though you don't have a jurisdiction over the college, is because that very act compromises the college's ability to receive several financial aid. Um, so I think this is a county issue. Um, Dr. Connolly has abused his power. Uh, even the numbers, again, I appreciate Commissioner Degroot and.
Schick.
Schick. I always want to add a T. Uh, for, for, you know, looking into the college and what's done. But I also want to be clear about one thing. Director Space, uh, I think, uh, you know, when I said the twenty million dollars, you sort of looked at me like, ah, no way. Um, I, I just want to say that I was wrong. Okay? It's not twenty million dollars. There's twenty million dollars in reserves. There's another five point five million dollars in chapter twelve that you guys bond every year for the college. There's another one point four million dollars for, for a grant that was received to expand the R building. So there is north of twenty-five million dollars sitting there. And this idea that every single year, Dr. Connolly and Kate Gandhi have to dictate, according to our audit, what that money is to be used for, they lie. They're not truthful. The money should be used for our students. The money should be used for improvements. And the money should be used to properly staff the college. The money they have put away has been raised on the back of all of us that work there. And the reason I spoke out is because the staff is being abused. They're being taken advantage of. And it's all being done by someone who is delusional.
One minute.
And obsessed with power. And I'm sorry, my dad wasn't a partner at a law firm. He was a mechanic. So maybe I appreciate what we do at Sussex County Community College much more than, than the son of a, a law partner who's, who's sort of taking advantage of our rural county. Uh, but something needs to be done here. The board defended John Connolly last night. They did not really talk about launching an investigation. I hope Mr. Degroot fills you in on the other accusations that I made publicly. I made accusations about Dr. Connolly sexually harassing me. I made allegations about being called a fag at work and Dr. Connolly refusing to investigate that. I made allegations about somebody refusing to work with me because I'm gay. Who cares? I do a good job. And that is the problem.
Time.
Telling somebody they're religious and they don't want to work with me, it's unacceptable.
Thank you.
So I urge you, you have power to put pressure on the board. And I'd urge you to please use that power. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to state for the record that, you know, you had your audio that in the state of New Jersey, it is legal to record someone as long as the person doing the recording is speaking and is in agreement. The other person does not need to know.
Yes, I want to know.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure. I want to state that for the record in case the audience didn't know or anyone listening.
Is this your municipality?
My municipality.
Yes.
Sparta.
Okay. Thank you. No, that's okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner, too, I just want to add because, you know, I, I, you have a couple of people here coming from the college. And, and again, yes, our jurisdiction isn't, uh, we, we, we put the Board of Trustees in place. And that's what we do. But I can tell you that Commissioner Degru and Commissioner Schick were at the Board of Trustees. They have been in contact with the Board of Trustees. And to a point, Commissioner Space and myself met with a Board of Trustee at five o'clock today. So we are, I'm not going to say taking interest because I'd rather not deal with that. We have enough headaches here at the county. Um, but we're trying to get a grasp on what's actually happened, happening. I have been met with the CFO, our CFO, the other day. So it's not like we don't care. We care. My son goes there, as a matter of fact. He's a sophomore there right now. So we do care. And I just make sure, you know, I want to make sure everybody understands that. It's, we can only do so much.
Yeah, I'll take one more. Yes, go ahead.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Sorry. I, I, I completely understand that. But the thing is, is it has been over six weeks since the first letter was received. And none of us, I'll be very honest with you, none of us want to take legal action. I just told you I was sexually harassed by the man. And I have a list of other things, a lot that I have shared and a lot more to share. My interest is not legal action. My interest is not pushing this further. It's simply doing what's right for Sussex County. And I know we're all, well, most people here are trying to do that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Good evening. Glenn Hall, Dayton. Um, I'm here about broadband. I was hoping that you would address that. Um, you said you were going to go to the meeting last Friday and I didn't hear you.
I did make, I did comment on it.
I'm, I'm interested in broadband. What kind of broadband are you looking?
Again, you're, you're getting very technical. We're still, it's still, I thought we were going to learn a little bit more. The only thing that we really learned is, like I said earlier, was that challenge. And finding out, at this point, we need to start a, uh, VFN? Is it VFN? Get a VFN number. If I misspeak, it's because I have not, you know, I, I don't work in broadband or, or, or communications. Um, that is, is getting the word out, finding who doesn't have high-powered internet. Because I know you don't think that, but most people do that come up twisting a blank. And then kind of get that, those numbers, get a map, hand it to the VPU, and then they're going to start coming up with the funds that we're going to be able to use to establish high-end.
But straightening this up right now. I'm not saying anybody doesn't have high-powered internet. You made the comment that there's people without internet. I never talked about quality of internet.
Okay.
That's where the difference is here. I'm asking.
I apologize for, for misusing words.
That's why I'm here. What kind of broadband is the county asking for? There's all kinds.
And, and like I said to you previously, as high-powered as we can get. So if it's five G, it's five G. If it's four, again, you're talking to somebody who builds bridges and roads.
You already have four G. So if we're looking for five G.
It's, it's just a losing cause.
Not everybody does. There's a lot. Not everybody does. There's lots of zones where they don't have any.
If you're trying to bring this to the county, have you looked into the possible dangers of 5G? I mean, these transfers only go so far and have been very close to a half-
Mr. Hall, if I may, because I was a part of the meeting, I just wanted to clarify. What the meetings that we had were with the VPU to identify areas that potentially they say have internet access, period. And we're supposed to be putting together these challenges to say, okay, this area you indicate has broadband, but they actually don't. Or that they indicate doesn't have broadband, but they actually do. So right now, it's going through that, and that's the point that we're at right now. It's not figuring out what type of broadband or anything like that. It's just identifying sections in the county that are lacking the ability to have an internet access.
And we won't be able to do this without the help of the municipalities.
I just can't believe that there's a spot in this county that does not have internet access.
Sir, I- I think we could raise, everybody in this room who doesn't have good broadband, raise your hands. I mean, look around.
I'm not talking about-
I feel like we're going tit for tat. I mean, we're just, at the end of the day, Glenn, at the end of the day, we're just trying to help. Money was promised to us, and we're trying to pull it back. That's it. That's the end of it. So we can go back and forth arguing about, we have it, we don't have it. It's not going to get anywhere. This is what, this-
That's what I'm asking.
To install the poles, to install the lines, to be able to put the infrastructure in place so that there's connectivity throughout the county.
And that would be 5G, you're talking.
We know. She's not saying that.
Just connectivity.
Are we done?
Yes.
Director, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we should study all of the health hazards that go-
Moving on. Okay, thank you. We're moving on. Anyone else? I'm going to make a mo-, can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, from Deputy Director Carney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. Motion carries. Number 24. Reminders, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Executive session. Go ahead, Christina.
Resolution regarding providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 at set, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session for which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated below. Item number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege. Tort claim, contracts, metered parking, contracts, NJTPA study, contracts, Department of Engineering. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. And be it further resolved that the Board expects to or not to.
We could, yes.
Potentially take formal action after returning from executive session. Motion.
Can I get a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into an executive session?
I make motion.
Okay, Commissioner Degroot makes a motion in a second.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. Motion carries. Okay, the time is 9:26. Can I get a motion to adjourn from executive session and return to regular business?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden with the motion in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, back session. We're going to adjourn the meeting at 9:20 p.m.
Don't you-
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I was adjourning it myself.
You go, girl.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:20.
Second's going up there.
The second with-
And second.
Second by who?
Commissioner Hayden. Okay.
All in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 9:20.